My organizing secretary is at the back. Folks, there's a reason why I'm saying this. A lot of us talk the talk, but we don't walk the walk. We talk the talk, but we don't walk the walk. Let me tell you one of the ways we can make change here in North America. Getting your name on the PNCR up new correlation list. If all of these names in here goes on that list, and get one of those cards and have a Guyana ID card or a birth certificate, you can vote. You can vote. There is ways in which you can get a birth certificate if you don't have one, and I know everybody here has one. If you have your birth certificate and you can secure your Guyana ID card, you can vote. If you join one of the PNCR groups and you have a parking membership card and you go to Georgetown, they can assist you. Comrades, we got to stop talking, talking walk the walk. We have to stop talking, talking walk the walk. We had a rally, a group called the Guyanese Organizations Against Racism. We attracted 10,000 plus Guyanese and we marched from Church Avenue to Grand Army Plaza. Subsequently, we had a town hall at Woodbine, Guyana's Mecca. We had over 600 people. I'm sorry? About 3,000 in Woodbine, people were packed like sardines. Only to listen to what's happening in our country. We were addressed by city council members, the NYPD, the Justice Department, the Attorney General. Everybody understands what's happening in Guyana, all of them. Letitia James, the Attorney General, mentioned in her presentation that should anything happen to any one of us who were on that stage that day, or any Guyanese who speaks against the government, they're gonna have to answer to her. Now, if people can come... If people from other countries can stand up for us, here's the Guyanese store, what happened to eat? If Tish James and the NYPD and the Justice Department and everybody can come to support Guyana's cause, or the people of Guyana's cause, what happened to we? We'll be there. But when events like this are finished, and I walk up to a store, a Guyanese establishment, and I say, you know, I am from the New York Central PNC, I'd like you to join the... By being a time with them? Being a time with the Yar, try to with the Yar government. Now, who is Yar? And folks, I can go on and on and on. My urge to you tonight is when you leave here, become involved. Get involved. Let's make a difference. It is said that if you want change, you have to become a part of the change. If Bortum didn't want change in Guyana, he would not have become a part of that change to get rid of colonialism. If Jagan didn't want it, he would not have formed the PPP. If Mandela didn't want it, he wouldn't have been in jail for 25 or 30 years. And the list goes on. We need to put ourselves in those people's shoes as it relates to change and stop thinking selfishly. I can't think about Washington. I don't have any cause to be going back to Guyana except to see some poverty. But my heart, not Sandy's heart, my heart. My heart is in Guyana and my body is here, every single day. And with that comrades, it is my time, my turn to introduce you to the folk sitting at the table. Sandy did it, but I'm gonna ask you to give them a round of applause. Our first speaker for tonight, our first guest speaker for tonight, this is a young man who might go back a long, long way. Bortum had an idea for the national, for the YSM. Some stayed in Georgetown, some went into the interior. Him and I went into the interior and we were called the Guyana Youth Corps. How many of you remember the Youth Corps? Paul Sloane and I were shipped off to Chamari, along with another couple of hundred young people at about, how old were we Paul?
40 or 40 plus?
No, I'm sorry, you have like 64. So, we always know we just aged it. But we were shipped off to Chamari to start building the road to Brazil. I got cards big time. Only since I came here, I found lotion and stopped my hand from getting grit again. But we did it, and we did it for our country. So ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor to introduce and present to you our first guest speaker for tonight, Mr. Paul Sloane.
I'm Washington. If I want to say anything about you, it will be truthful. As I've been, you know, I tell the truth. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here to interact and to say a few things. My background really is law enforcement. I was a senior police officer in the Guyana Police Force for 27 years. I rose to the rank of constable, I joined in 1974. I really retired in 2010. I held the rank of Assistant Commissioner of Police. The rank I held it for almost 12 years because, well, if you follow the story, because I was not one to give in to demands of political forces. And there was a particular incident in Barbies when I was a commander there in 2003, where I was asked to do some things that were at least unethical. And I refused all the way up to the president. I stood up and I said, "I'm not gonna do that." And therefore, I remained as the Assistant Commissioner for almost 12 years until I retired. But I had no regret at all, none whatsoever. Now, since my retirement, I decided what I would have lived, a very quiet and peaceful life. Because after 27 years in the force and senior commands could have been, could be very active. But then what happened? I became the Chairman of the Police Office Commission in 2018. Under the Coalition Government, I was appointed a member on the Chairman of the Police Office Commission. For those of you who don't know, the Police Office Commission in Guyana is a constitutional body with the responsibility of promoting and disciplining police officers from the rank of inspector right up to Assistant Commissioner. And we got there with a police background. We had some, I had some other retired Assistant Commissioners with me as members of the commission. So we knew, as they would say, the runners of the force. And we knew that lots of things weren't done correctly. And we vowed and we started to put things on the correct track. So for example, when we took over in 2018, there were credible allegations that warnings had to be passed for persons to be promoted. Sexual favors were demanded for persons to be promoted. And we put a stopping to that. We put a stop in and started to turn the Service Commission around. People publicly expressed dissatisfaction without things were going on the Police Office Commission. Of course, in terms of discipline, we had to dismiss a few corrupt and dishonest police officers. That was something unprecedented. People did all manner of things and weren't held to account. And we said that that could not be. So we did what we had to do. Now, what happened then is that government changed in 2020. I was still the Chairman of the Police Office Commission because the life of the Chief, uh, Police Office Commission is three years. So having me sworn in the night of August 2018, the life of the commission automatically expired on the 8th of August 2021. On the 17th of September 2020, remember the government came into being on the 2nd of August. On a mere, less than two months after, on the 17th of September, I had a meeting with the president at the Presidential Secretary. During the course of that meeting, the president tried to, I won't say persuade, tried to impress upon me the need or his desire to have some police officers promoted. Two of those police officers that you mentioned are disciplining matters of spending. And the rules of the commission states that once you have disciplinary matters of spending, you cannot be considered for promotion until those matters have been concluded. So I politely and very professionally advised the president what the rules are. That was on the 17th of, or the 16th, I haven't written down somewhere, 16th of September 2020. And as I said in a press release, as I said in a press release, Guyanese will be familiar with the term, I was buttered up during the course of that meeting. The president promised me to keep me as a chairman, providing of course, I did what was expected or required. And, right, and I, again, I, the conversation ended at that date. And even though I worked as a Police Office Commissioner, I informed the other members of what took place. And they supported me, that we were not going to bow to any political or any other pressure. We're gonna do what is the correct thing. And I should mention that the thing was so bad that one of the officers who the president expressed a desire to have promoted, had a disciplinary matter before the commission. The commission initiated disciplinary charges against him. And he went to the I Court to challenge it. And the matter was still pending at the I Court when the president was expressing a desire to have him promoted. So I said, "No, that is not gonna happen." So we started our deliberations for the promotion on the 23rd of December of the same year 2020. And for those of you who may not know, traditionally in the Guyana Police Force, there's a big promotion on only as night, as you would see. That is the tradition. So only as night, you have a ball in the police officers' mess and the promotions are released from inspector, well, from corporal right up to the Service Commission. They're released from Inspector to Assistant Commissioner and the commission released from sergeant, from the corporals and the sergeants. So we started our work on the 23rd of December and we created what is known as a shortlist. And again, let me explain. When promotions are made, I guess it's now when the promotion, uh, the police personnel, the recommendations come in and you have vacancies in specific positions. So most times, you're gonna have more recommendations than vacancies. So you have to sit and go through the criteria when the person passed the promotion examination, whether the person has disciplinary matter pending, whether the person is known to not to be corrupt. All of those things have to be gone through. So a shortlist is created for further consideration. The very night, the 23rd of December, I got home and shortly after Gay, a call, I was asked to make a call to the president. And let me be clear. The fact that the commission met that day and I was asked to call the president that night, I had my suspicions as to what the nature of the call would be. And I told my family that I was not gonna make the call. But then being a disciplined person, I thought it would have been rude not to make the call. So I reluctantly did so. And I tell people, and people who are close to me will tell you what I admit. It is perhaps the worst mistake I have made in my life. Because they tried thereafter to make my life a living hell. So the president wanted to know why those persons weren't promoted. If we wanted, I told him. And he carried on, and the conversation ended. And the next day, you know, let me digress a little to say that I have been speaking about this for almost two years now. And not on a single occasion can they, they have tried to rebut anything that I've said because I have the evidence. So this conversation, the Police Office Commission met on the 23rd of December 2020 during the course of the day. The night, the conversation with the president. The very next day, the 24th of December 2020, the Minister of Affairs, Robson Ben, communicated to the acting Commissioner of Police that he wanted several police officers on other rounds, charged with criminal offenses, not investigated, charged with criminal offenses. I have the document. He communicated. And it was clear because some of the names that were mentioned, including the late Edmund Cooper, who was buried, I think, two weeks ago. Those were persons who were shortlisted. And it was clear that that was done to influence the Police Office Commission, not to promote those persons. They wanted them charged criminally. So when we met, I looked at the thing and the thing was transparent, you could see through it. And the commission decided that we were going to ignore that because it was improper and we were not going to exceed or we're not gonna be caving in to that arrangement. So we did not. We sat again and we started on the 30th of December, the same year, Senior Superintendent Calvin Gooters, and I call him now, you know, because let's, we're gonna call him now. I tell it like. Senior Superintendent, well, he's Assistant Commissioner now. He moved to the court to get basically an injunction to prevent the promotion. He was joined by four officers, Stanley, he was joined by Premier Ryan, Jupiter, and Mani Bakas, who's in, he joined, they joined him. And therefore, the Chief Justice, Madame Roxanne Jarrett, basically put a speed on the promotions. And we could not have gone ahead with the promotions then. Now, during the course of that period, the police commissioner, or shortly before then, the police commissioner, Les Tishams, called myself and other, some other retired police officers and said to us, he wanted us to assist in revising the police standing order. Standing order is like a bible for the force. Tells you what to be done, how arrests are made, if a person is arrested, what actions should be taken, it's a bible. If you're in the force, you don't know the standing order, you really can't do policing. But the standing order was outdated because they still spoke about trains and steam affair and all of those things. So they wanted revised. So we sat, called us, and we agreed that we were gonna revise the police standing order. We decided two days a week, voluntary service, nothing discussed about any remuneration or anything like that. And we started to work, did a lot of work on the police standing order. Now, what happened then is that all of a sudden, the Minister of Affairs, again, the records are there, went to Parliament and made a statement that $300 million were missing from the police finance office. Google it, you're gonna see. President Ali made a similar statement. $300 million. So therefore, they asked SOCO, the Special Organized Crime Unit, to investigate this $300 million. I should say to you that while we were doing the review of the standing order, the man who was responsible, Assistant Commissioner Royce Andrews Jr., came to us and told us that the police admin, the senior admin, had made a decision that we were gonna be paid a stipend for the days that we were there. Of course, we had agreed that we accepted the stipend, there was no negotiation. They decided what the stipend will be, we accepted the stipend. Now, during the course of this investigation by SOCO, the man who was disciplined by the Police Office Commission, decided that the evil event true and they saw the vouches that myself, Mr. Conway, Rithika, several police officers were paid a stipend. They decided that that is conspiracy to commit fraud. They laugh, it's serious business. So on the 19th of May 2021, Conway, Guyana, Rithika, Fraser, George Fraser are arrested for conspiracy to commit fraud. I was in the States at the time, right? The very night, they issued some wanted bulletins. So long before you nation wanted bulletins, uh, for me. So, and let me, let me tell you this, let me, well, let me go forward. So the issue is, if people appeared in court on the 19th, the following day, charged with conspiracy to commit fraud. That is on the 20th of May 2021. The matter was still before the court. The next court date is sometime in April this year, I think the 26th of April. Which means that when the matter is called next, more than two years would have passed till the charges have been instituted. And it can't be decided as yet, right? Now, the, the Prime Minister, I think his name was Anthony Phillips, right? On the very day, the 19th of May, when those, my colleagues were arrested, the very day, he wrote a letter to myself and Conway as members of the Police Office Commission, asking us to show cause why you should not advise the president to have us, to have us removed from the Service Commission before you were, because you were charged with this trumped up charge of conspiracy to commit fraud. Very day, on a Sunday. So the 19th, the people are arrested. And the Prime Minister is so efficient that the very day he knew that persons were charged, even before they appeared in court, and he can then write a letter. And it's not finished there because there's a case, again, I can talk all night, but I would not do so. There's a case with Carville Duncan, who was the Chairman of the Public Service Commission. And he was accused of some offensive charge. And the government then, I think the coalition attempted to remove him. And therefore, the courts held, we know something of presumption of innocence and all of that. The man, if you charge him, he's presumed to be innocent. And therefore, the court held that, no, you can't move him. So they recognized that, they were trying to do the same thing. They recognized that. So then, they moved it to another stage. They then discovered that they put several commissions, including the Police Office Commission, had joined with MP, my father, and Corretta and all of those people when they challenged the Fiscal Management and Accountability Act. The Police Office Commission joined in that. So they use that now. We got a second letter from Mark Phillips to say that because we joined with the politicians to challenge the Fiscal Management and Accountability Act, that we should show reason why you should not advise the president to have us removed. All the members this time, is that the first time with myself and Conway because we were charged? This time, all members of the commission to be removed. And of course, we, our lawyer, commission's lawyer, Mr. Selvick P. Selvick, out of Carolina, replied to them with a 500 and something page document. I don't think they, they even read it because they were determined to adopt a certain course. So they, they replied there to say, "Well, look, you can't go ahead and do these things because of whatever reason and so on." On the 16th of June, the 16th of June, the president wrote to each member suspending the Police Office Commission immediately. So that was challenged. And I'm not gonna go into too many details or too much details of that because that matter is still before the court, the judge, all the arguments have been made. The judge is the rule, Mr. Chino Pasad is the real again. I think it's sometime next month, he's to announce his decision, right? But it is not, it did not finish there. As I indicated, I'm in the US at the time, on the 19th of May, when the arrests were made, arrests were made. At the time, I was working with the West Indies Cricket Board. So my job took me all over the Caribbean and far to field travel, all, all the time, I traveled. So I came up here at the time and I was in Chile, I was in Antigua working when the, they applied to the court for an arrest warrant for me, which was denied. So my lawyer, Mr. Hughes, told me that, "That's a look. I am working and as soon as my, as my tour of duty is finished, I'm coming to Guyana, I'm not gonna be fearful of. I am coming to Guyana." So he made, he got a date on the 15th of October for me to appear. So I traveled from the US on Wednesday, the 13th of October 2021 for the sole purpose of attending court, God hang it up and die, right? So I turned up and I turned up in Guyana on the 13th, the Wednesday, and as a man with his ears ground on the ground, I understood some things were being done. And I did certain things to avoid them, right? So on the morning of the night of the, 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 the 15th, I drove from where I live to BB on the East Coast to go to court, parked my vehicle in breakdown opposite by Demico. And I walked into the court compound. And as I was climbing the stairs, three or four people came in front of me and identified themselves as police officers. Well, they didn't identify, they just said, "Police officers." "Ah, yes, they're here to arrest me." "What for?" "Conspiracy to commit fraud." "Is that the same matter that you summoned me to come to court with, come to court for?" "Yes." "Somebody, that can't be, you can't, you have no jurisdiction over me at this stage. The matter is already before the court. The court has not issued a warrant. I'm here to attend court and the only place I'm going is in court." "Well, they will allow, the tape is here for all to see, they allowed to me. And I held my ground, I'm not going anyplace other than in the court." "They were telling me, well, come to the office, I'm not going to the office, I'm here. In answer, I have a summon. The very man who's trying to arrest me is the one who summoned me to go to court." "Oh, but I turned up in court, in the court, the man is arresting me for the same matter." "So I said, 'No, I'm not taking like upstairs,' eventually. Because the lawyers intervened, Mr. Peters, who came shortly after, Mr. Patrice Henry, they intervened and advised them, so I went upstairs. So, to my surprise, when I got there, the one charge is read about conspiracy to commit fraud and three charges of sexual assault, where it is said that a policeman claimed that during the course of those meetings, on three separate occasions, I touched her legs in a lottopian fashion." "As a matter of fact, that matter came up this afternoon, 1:30 virtually, and it's for next week, Wednesday again, right? And they have been, well, let me, let me say this. I have made it clear on television and elsewhere that I prefer to die than to cave in to the..." "I am not, I, everything that I say is the truth." "They went so far, a store, they sued me, one of the matters was dismissed. And I have news to them to believe because the matter was dismissed before the court is finished." "Nah, I grew up in the country, we had a game, we used to play no donuts in life." "So they believe it's finished, but I have news to them. I don't know they're gonna hear, I just want them to hear. And let them try to find out what the next step would be. They will know in, in, in due time." "Because the corruption is rampant. And the thing that annoys me or annoys me is that, look, you're trying to influence a certain course of action. And the persons say, 'No, I ain't going the longer way.' And that is what you're gonna do to them." "I saw the Guyana Police Force for 27 years, unblemished. Nobody can point any finger. As a matter of fact, when I retired in 2020, I made a statement that did not sit well with a lot of people. I say, I've been served for 27 years. Not a single person in Guyana elsewhere can point a finger at me and say that I have asked them for any bribe or ever accepted any bribe from them. And then I went down to see, I am not sure how many of you can see that. And it didn't sit well because you had a lot of senior people there answering. But those are the facts. Then I am saying this to, to give you a background as to how corrupt some of the government officials are and police officers are as well, right? They do anything that they are told to do all because they want to curry favor or to fight favor with the politicians. And if you follow the trend, many of those cases, the majority of those cases gone down the drain because they, 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 there's no evidence, so they just bring this thing to drag you through the mud. Because in my case, they wanted me to do the poor walk. So I'm there to, to go to court. So they wanted to carry me to the office, we're gonna put handcuffs on you. And then they have the people from the media who are their friends, they would have alerted. So when you come out, they take picture and then you plaster all over the media and all of that as a criminal. And many of them who are there are more criminals and the criminals were identified publicly. I know that. I know that. I know that, right? And I say this again, that the, you know, the people have been, all the folks would always say, you know, the police force, the Guyana Police Force always have issues and there's no doubt about that. Like most organizations, you have always had allegations of corruption, allegations of police, of political interference and all that. But this time... But this time, it has gone to new levels, the, the, the corruption, I'm talking here about the political interference and direction in every aspect of the policing in Ghana. And again, I did it to challenge me, so much so that not so long ago, when the police from the very, so, um, special organized crime unit arrested a female attorney for advising her client not to give a statement to the police, the Attorney General, and again, I call him there, let him sue if they want to, the Attorney General said publicly that he called the head of, um, the, the, the special organized crime unit and told him to not to, to release the, 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 the person, the Attorney General called the head of our department of the, the police force, didn't call the Commissioner, didn't call his colleague minister, he called, that is the type of, um, control that we're talking about. And even in the same matter, the lawyer who represented the attorney, or who deposed chamber the attorney was, when she was arrested, he did not call the Commissioner, he did not call the, 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 um, minister, who was president, anybody related, he called the Attorney General, why would he do so? He did so because he knew that is who controlled it, right? So, uh, there, there are so many other things, oh, Rick Ford got a lot to say and so on, but if you're praying, the, the, I command the police and they're politicians now, they are no longer police officers who are looking into the interest of the, 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 the public, as we say, protect and so on, they are politicians publicly. So if you look now, you're gonna see every place, the, the President goes, the senior politicians, the Commissioner is there and they talk a lot of, of things, I'm gonna deal with it tomorrow, Rick Ford. I have a program every Wednesday, speaking out, exposing corruption in competence at Villa Bakla, um, on Facebook and YouTube, tomorrow I have it to speak about because some statements that were made today about protocols and so on, rubbish, rubbish and I'm gonna let them know what the real protocols are, so they can listen out, I normally invite them and I know they listen, they listen out. So folks, I said that to say to you that as a person with the law enforcement background and not only in Ghana, I work all over the Caribbean, so I know something about law enforcement, I had the privilege of being, of attending the FBI Academy back, way back in nineteen ninety, I have the privilege of attending Police Staff College in the UK in nineteen ninety four, the last Police Officer of Ghana, so I've attended that prestigious, um, university, the, the, the organization. I have the privilege of being a graduate of the United States Defense, um, what they call it, CSD Center for Economic Defense Studies. So I know something about law enforcement, I know something about law enforcement in Ghana. So when I speak, I believe I speak with some authority and as I said before, I'm not gonna address anyone and just make up stories until now, yeah, and I challenge them repeatedly. If you want to dispute anything that I have said, go ahead and dispute and as a trained police officer, I can bring the evidence, I can bring the facts and I, and my facts is not like the, the, um, Trump politician facts, it's not alternative facts, it's the facts. And we are the Commissioner of Police, the late great Emmy Fraser, who used to say that facts are stubborn things, no matter what you do, you can't change the. So we said that, I don't want to go on much longer, I, 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 I hope that I've been able to give you, um, a little synopsis of what is going on in the country that we all claim to love. And I love the country, I can, I born in Ghana, that can't change, I born, I served for number of years, that cannot change, right? As a police officer, you are required to operate professionally and I get so over the years and I, I, I'm close by saying, when I, when in nineteen ninety two, and again in nineteen ninety seven, ninety six, I was at the time, in the first instance, in charge of the tactical services, the duty of the Ghanaian police force, the responsibility for dealing with public order. So when on October the fifth, nineteen ninety two, there are disturbance in Georgetown and I had to go out there with the TSU runs and deal with it in a professional way, I was the darling of the PPP, I was the darling, I was the most professional officer they raised. And when I went again in nineteen ninety six by GCOM, when they had disturbance, they had to take action to dispose the crowd again, I was the best thing since sliced bread. But when in two thousand and three, I still, I told the President, well, sorry, sir, uh, my cannot unlock the firearm in this matter because the matter is under investigation, they decide to demonize, well, but they should have learned a lesson from them, right? As long as I have breath, I will continue to speak the truth and I will continue to challenge injustice. So thank you very much for your representation and I'm sure later on, if that's what I have to answer, I'll, I'll try to answer them, thank you. Come on, folks, give this man a round of.
Before I bring the next speaker, let me say that if you have questions and you wanna make a mental note of your questions, just hold on to them until the end, when the speakers are finished, you can raise your hand, we'll allow you to ask a question, we ask that you don't, you ask questions, don't give statements, just ask questions so you can get answers, all right? And, um, in the interest of time, we have a couple of hours in here, so we want to utilize them to our advantage. Now, keep in mind as we go forward the words that you're hearing here, and I made some notes of some, some specific words, and in addition to the fact that Paul was very captivating in his speech, he had everybody sitting on the edges of their chairs, he used words like criminals, I want you to keep these words in mind because you're gonna hear them a lot. He used words like being dragged through the mud, hurry favor, manipulation, political interference. And I can go on, I made like seventeen words that he used that I know we're gonna hear later on, but folks, these words are telling the whole story, they're telling the whole story. It's now my honor to introduce you to, bring to the microphone, none other than, you need to stand up for this guy. You need to stand up for this guy. The honorable, it was, great, a task, it's a right, it's a right.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Hi.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Washington. Good evening, everyone. The honorable MP, Artur Macdonald, my colleague, Mr. Sulu, my coworker, Mr. Bork, former Deputy Mayor, and still a colleague, Akin Peters.
Where's Akin Peters, raise your hand, former Deputy Mayor, very good.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I am proud to be in your presence and when I was called to attend this meeting, I did not hesitate to say yes, I will be here. Took us a long wait, but you mean it, thanks to Rudy. Um, well, I guess that you here in the diaspora have been following what is taking place in our country and city, but I will focus on the city, that is my main focus as a mayor, the home for the entire nation, a city where all investment, our investors are going to invest in different projects and be neglected by the present administration. Why I say that? There are many laws that govern our country and the city is governed by chapter twenty to one. And every day you tend to see that government ministers, they're bypassing these laws and they're entering the city to do their own thing. I decided to put a halt on such an issue on the twelfth December, twenty twenty two, where I stood up for some of our vendors in the city. No notice was issued to the City Council, no engagement, no consultation was done with the, the Office of the Mayor or any officials from the city. However, those vendors reached my step and they cried for help and I said to them, you are legally placed there, not by me, but the dead council and you have a document which states that the council grant you permission to vent there, to make an honest living. My brothers and sisters, every day you have single mother and single father come to the door of the mayor to seek assistance, how to make a honest living. Many of them have been fired by the present administration, VP government. What you want these people to do? The only way that you can able to get things done for your children out there and to pay your bill is to go sometime to put up a little table and to do some vending, maybe sell some food or some clothing or something. I'm a man of God and I believe I am placed here to serve the people and I must serve them. I must serve them. With all respect, I must find something for the kids, how to pay their bills. If you have been fired, be a single mother, a single father, it is not easy to live in Guyana. When the President or the Minister make, mentioned that Guyana is a beautiful place, Guyana is a beautiful place at this point of time for one circle, not one. And I emphasize this many times, there is no one Guyana, one Guyana is a one circle for a special group of, of people. When you want to speak on one Guyana, it will take you back to two thousand and six, I believe, in the PNC slogan or logo was one Guyana, it mean to, in, the inclusive of all races, all religion and, uh, uh, our different culture. One Guyana, I played from the PNC, right? Where you would, there, there is a breakdown. Where you have a breakdown on what Guyana actually meant. It's not a new thing, right? But this one Guyana that the current government is speaking of is for, is a one circle, I don't call it one Guyana, one circle for a special group of people. And you know, while coming here, I received a message from a few colleagues from Burbes and these are Indian people, supporter of the PPP. Saying to me that, Mr. Mayor, we hail you as a hero, we want you to come in Burbes, we want you to come and listen to, to our crying, that what we are facing in Burbes with this present government, they are coming into our community and into our villages and making our promises which have been never fulfilled. Only one set of group have been benefiting and that is the supporter of the party who hold membership card of the People Progressive Party. These are the things I have heard in Burbes, receiving message from messenger, I don't know the people in, but probably they follow me on Facebook and my page and they're trying to reach out to me. I stood up for those vendors, I laid on the truck which, um, really, no, no money, I do have a family, I was ready to actually give my life up, I said, leave the truck one, uh, drive over me, so be it, but these vendors would not be moved. Those vendors had the kids to send to school, one vendor said she, her son is going to UG and this is the only way she's able to make an honest dollar, to send her, um, child to UG, to gain a proper education. If we had a proper government, they should actually write down all the debts of UG right now. All the people that students are currently studying at UG, the government owns boats and bravo of all developed nation and all those investors and, uh, uh, coming to our country to invest and the President and ministers making statement, what a beautiful country we are having in terms of development, do the honorable thing, give those students a living, a living, help them out so they can able to get the degree completed. I was arrested by the Ghanaian police force, but I know I cannot speak on the matter, I was barred from the court not to speak on the matter, so I don't want when I return, they arrest me, they, and they report, so I can't dive into that matter. But you saw what happened and the level of the arrest and I was there, I was on bail, but that didn't stop me, I continued to reach out to the people, I continued to communicate with the Ghanaian police force, I continue to support all my Guyanese brothers and sisters. But the laws in our country continue to break every day.
Yes.
By this government, especially in the city. And you know, I never said this, but I will say it here at this forum, when I was arrested, one of the government minister called me after I was placed on bail and so on, and I had the evidence, you know, it's got screenshot, right?
Yeah.
And, um, the, and the, the minister said to me, Mr. Mayor, we are with you, the statement that you made, we can see it, but we cannot come out and speak. And they didn't sought my advice on your arrest, but I guess that was an instruction from the hill. That is the Minister of Government presently, but nevertheless, I say that to say to you, even they're in the old camp.
Yep.
Even in their old camp, they have issue, they're seeing the injustice, what have been, what has been done to the Guyanese people and they're free to speak. The injustice that has been happening to our Guyanese people, even the Minister of Government are free to speak because you know what? The Minister of Government is not Minister of Government, they're ministers that be directed by a dictator and that is what we have to understand what is happening in Guyana. But as a mayor, I will continue the struggle, local government election will be the twelve of June, I will continue to struggle until then, I will continue to put policies in place for the citizens of Georgetown, I will continue not only to talk the talk, but the walk the walk. And, and that is something we have to do as a people and I heart, believe me, we don't walk the walk many times, we come and we talk and even, I, 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 you know, I'm a plain spoken person and even in my political party, we don't walk the walk sometimes.
Very true.
And when we able to walk the walk, the people will see, the people will stand with us, I have no fear of no one and I've always been like this since I joined politics or whoever know me, I always be the plain spoken person and when you be the plain speaker, you don't have eyesight. We have to walk the walk, we have to, don't come and let us say that we're gonna fight We have to, don't come and let us say that we're gonna fight and we wouldn't fight. You're not fooling us, you're not fooling the people, you're fooling yourself. So we have to walk the walk. We have to take the pressure. If you have been locked up, I cited in jail yet. Because I committed no wrong, I just tell up to the people.
Yeah.
Right? I didn't do anything. And you want to jail me. We, when we, when we prepare to walk the walk, he was able to face the bars. He was able to die for people. And that is something that we need to go down to. I'm not creating violence in my country, anything. But we need to stand up for people. There are many people out there crying in Guyana. I got, I don't get a salary as a me, I get a stipend. My stipend, don't mind me. A hundred and fifty Guyana, a hundred and fifty thousand Guyana dollars is my stipend. You don't mind me. You don't mind me, don't reach my house. Right? But I'm a, I'm a man of God. So I continue to practice my power, niga. I continue, I'm a Hindu priest, so I continue to run my temples and so on. And there is not one individual in the city of Georgetown can selflessly say that I asked something or I take a break, not this. For the sake of integrity, I would not go down to sell my integrity for a couple of thousand dollars. That would be too much. So, so they can go outside the house, they can do everything. One minister make mentioned I own so much properties. I, I, I didn't deny that, but I said to the minister, go and investigate it. Let's go, go and investigate those properties that I owned. I'm not a rich man, but go and investigate it and see where it was bought. Go and investigate it, not in the mayor's office. It was bought way before, even twenty fifteen, right? So go and investigate it. I never respond in any harsh to that honorable minister. I believe that we all have a part to play in our democracy of Guyana. And we have to play that part. We have to speak up here. And I must say that Rick Ford is doing a fantastic job. By, by having the people come together and to know exactly what is the issues, I mean affecting Guyanese back home. We need to work together. We need to put, put things in place. This is not a fight, don't, it should never be a fight, don't between me and you. It should be a fight for the people. It should be a fight for one people, one nation and one destiny, which we don't have. That should be the fight. We should not divide the people. We should able to sit on one table and have lunch or breakfast or dinner. But we don't have that home. You have a few of them on the other side, which in the government side, which will come and tell you stories. But the vice president love to tell you stories. He loves to tell the stories. He love to, I was accused and corrupt. And I challenge the vice president. I challenge him on audit, two auditors done since I'm in office. By the same government. I challenge them to release the audit to the public. On to today, they can't release the audit. They couldn't find anything. What you will find in me? I don't manage the, 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 the finance department. There's committees set up to manage the city finance department. The mayor don't sign checks. The mayor don't give instruction to go and spend millions. Everything has to come to the council. It have to be voted on. I don't give those direction. You can imagine what this government have done to me. They tried to cripple the city. You have to find the money to pay the staff, seven hundreds of the staff of the city. You have to pay the benefits, but yet you can't discipline, fire or hire the staff. You ever hear dances like that? So you have a company. You fi, have to pay all these workers, but you can't fire them. You can't discipline them. You can't hire no one. It has to go through a local, something called the Local Government Commission body now, which is the next constitutional body. Which that system is set up in a way, as long you have the government, the government will always have majority members on that commission. So the government will have four members, one from the union, which is choose also by the government, which make it fight against tree opposition. So the government always has a majority on that commission. And you giving me a hell of a time at the city level with the administration. Because the city, and I'm saying this to you. The city at this point of time, it been tolerated by this government of incompetent officers who can't do the job. And if I had my way, I will fire many of those officers and hire professionals. I will hire professionals. The city of Georgetown has good potential. Let us not get away from that. Has good potential. But when you see you have a political arm that want to take control of every sector of democracy is dangerous for a nation. It's dangerous for me. And that's what we are having presently, where the central government is taking control through the local government commission to all the municipalities and all the N D Cs. They take control of it. You see recently that what happened with the, with the chairman, with the four, my, my comrade and friend and brother, Daniel Siram. Very young R U, who is subject to direction by the council, take away the mic from the chairman. That is called bully. My friend remind me, bullying, the R U have been, is bullying the, the, the chairman. Those things should never be tolerated in our democracy. What had done since then? The chairman made a report, I haven't seen the police yet. Go and arrest the R U. But they came to the office of the mayor to arrest me because I fight for a few vendors. That is a government we have to deal with, my friends. And I'm not afraid. I, I probably, when I go back, I don't know what will happen to me. But again, I will continue to say, I'm not afraid of the government. I'm not afraid of no one. My fear is the on my team. So with these three words, I want to assure you that Ubraj Narain will continue to serve his party with loyalty and will continue to serve.
Y'all stopped laughing already, come on, give him a round of applause. As usual, every time Ubraj Narain comes to New York, something helps him or his family.
When he moves back.
Then he goes back.
Or when he's here, something is happening.
The last time he was here, we were at another conference similar to this one. And we saw Ubraj's camper to the back, Ubraj's camper to the back of the room and he came back and he was literally sweating. And I think it was Rick Ford or one of us said, what's the problem? They took away the security from his home. His wife and child or chairman are left on their own. They do it all the time. They do it all the time. And Ubraj, let me say on behalf of these people here, we appreciate you. Let me see how many people has been listening. Give me a word that Ubraj use to describe the government. Anybody listen? Therefore. Bullionism? Huh?
Control.
Control?
Dictate.
Corrupt?
Dictate.
Huh?
Vindictive? Didn't say that, don't put that. Don't, oh wait a minute, the M T just reminded me that they can't use certain words in Parliament. But this is our Parliament, they're not fucking with you. Alright, okay, alright, alright, that was meant to be a joke, comrades. Take it easy, I know you'll fire it off. But you're gonna have, you're gonna have the chance to speak our minds. Um, one of the things that Ubraj said that shocked me and nothing new, but they're bypassing laws. The government is bypassing the laws of the country.
How long did you do that?
You know?
Seven, went journey to the river to the water.
But Ubraj also reminded us of what I said earlier. We got to walk the walk.
Yeah.
We got to start talking the talk, comrades, and we got to walk the walk. The last part of his speech, he mentioned that they are a dangerous government. And a dangerous government is a government that will cripple its people. So these are the kinds of words we need to pay attention to as we listen to these speakers. Let's give Ubraj Narain another round of applause. Alright, so we bring it to the phone, the microphone, another person. She's the only female at the head table. She is a member of Parliament. What's your shadow ministry? She is a shadow minister of the Ministry of Labour. She is also the general secretary of the Guyana Teachers Union. And she is the president of the Guyanese Trade Union Congress. This lady. And the more important title that she holds is, she was, um, fighting Sandy for me when we were young. Comrades, let's stand and give a remember question, Mr. Kupia. Other than that, we're not talking around the corner. We're not talking about that. And by the way, if you think you heard from Ubraj and Paul, listen to this.
Family. 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 You see, whether you come from region six or you're from Lethem in region nine, we are one big family. Because the coalition speaks, social cohesion. You see my brother in the corner here, Ubraj Narain? You see my brother down there? You see the other brother down there and the other one there that makes, that, that Amriddin and so on and him? We are the people, one people, one nation, one destiny. We don't talk race. We live as a people. And the only way for us to move forward is that we have to live as one people. And so, family, I bring you greetings from the lead of the opposition, from the people of Guyana and from the members of Parliament. I stand here this evening on the shoulders of many, many men and women who stood before me because they have now paved the way for me. And so I stand here on the shoulders of Lyndon Forbes Sansom. Comrades, just about a couple of days ago, maybe five days or six days ago, he would have been one hundred years. The man with a vision, a legend, an icon, and so many other words we can use to describe that man. Who what you hear? One or two edge you're talking about now about the roads and whole housing scheme and all kind of thing. Burnham created all of those long ago. And if you don't know, let me say to you, Tugville Housing Scheme. Burnham. Caryfefter Avenue, you know how it got that name? Burnham from the Caryfefter Festival.
Nineteen seventy-two.
Nineteen seventy-two. Festival City, South Runvel Park, East the Pedant's, West the Pedant's, East Runvel, North Runvel, and all the other housing schemes that we have. Burnham created those. And Burnham's vision for our nation was to feed, clothe and to host the nation. So when you hear the P P P talk about, we putting up housing schemes and we putting up this and we putting up the, follow pattern. Follow pattern. And all they're doing is changing, changing the words and putting their own words. And I'm happy that Ubraj reminded us about the one Guyana. That was an initiative by the Honorable Robert Corvish when he was meeting the party then. So this one Guyana thing that they're talking about, trying to distract us and trying to erase, you know what they're trying to do? They're trying to erase everything that Burnham laid out there. But I want to say to you, Burnham's legacy will continue to live on. And we as members of the P N C and the A P M U, we have got to champion that cause and continue to have that legacy living on. By promoting Burnham, every time we go, wherever we go, we must continue to stand as Guyanese, as proud Guyanese. Because unless we do that, we wouldn't be acknowledging the efforts and the sacrifices that were made by so many who went before us. I can talk for hours, but you know what I did? I, I captured, I highlighted what I wanted to speak about. And then you're going to ask me the questions. So because I'm an educator, I'm going to start off with education. If you recognized, uh, just about a month and a half ago, not a month and a half, but just about a month ago, we had the largest budget in Guyana. Uh, that budget, seven hundred and eighty-one point something billion dollars. Seven hundred and eighty-one point nine billion dollars. Largest budget ever. But you know what? That budget will not make the small man or woman a real man or a real woman. Because that budget is centered around the three Ss. Friends, well, families, friends and favorites. Those are the people who will benefit from that budget, the three Ss. And in my budget speech, I said to the speaker, this budget has fallen short. It does not satisfy the needs of the people. And it's a replica of the young man who's presenting it. Y'all know the young man? It's all like this. So the budget has fallen short. So that's, it's like story he's telling us in that budget. But in education, we have seen a drastic downturn in what our education sector used to be. And you know why that is happening? That is happening because we are now replacing professionalism with the Peter Pan principle. So anybody could come and become an education officer, whether you're qualified or not. But you have to be connected to the P P P C. But you have to be connected to the PPPC. Once you got that connection, you in business. So we no longer have professionalism as the key. Hence, the reason for what is happening in our education system. And in the education sector, they were given allotted, uh, 94.4 billion dollars. And in that entire budget presentation that came from the Minister of Education, we've not heard her say anything in that budget with regards to teachers' welfare. Now, if teachers are not comfortable, how are you going to make your students comfortable? Or your pupils comfortable? Or your learners comfortable? And I want you to mark the words that I'm using, you know? Learners, pupils, students. My Minister of Education, and I'm saying my, out of respect. She doesn't understand the difference between these groupings of people. So you could understand why we have confusion in the education sector. Nursery school children are called learners. Primary school, you call them pupils. In the secondary school, you call them students. Secondary and other tertiary, you call them students. So she know that? Y'all remember when she said she is a preposition? So you understand what we are faced with? My brother Paul so talked about the Police Service Commission and the people they had there during the coalition time, past police officers. Only those who know how the system operates can function in those com... those capacities. So if you have an authority, how would authority run education when you know nothing about education? So you understand what we are faced with? I'm not saying that we can't have people switching and people getting into the system and learning how to manage and so on, learning from others and taking their experiences and so on. But these people don't take no... They don't take no, no, um, suggestions and so on from anybody. As long as it's gonna benefit them, that's okay. And so, in the education sector, during the coalition's time, we had the five Bs. They've pulled the five Bs off. You know what they did with the buses? In some regions, they threw gas, uh, diesel in the, in, in the town where gasoline was supposed to go. They took off the David G. And they just put school bus, Region 4 school bus, Region 9, 10 school bus. Now, those buses, let me say to us, those buses were not government's money that was used to buy those buses. Those buses were gifts that were given to the president then for his birthday. And he decided, as a matter of fact, he said he didn't want any personal gift. He wanted, uh, gifts that will serve the people of Guyana. So he got boats, buses, bicycles, books, boots, breakfast. Lots more Bs were included there. They stopped the breakfast and they're not... They've now replaced it with hot meal. But you know what was one of the hot meal? Kool-Aid in a, in a, um... in a cool down clear plastic bag, kool aid and a sandwich. I am telling the truth. I am telling the truth. And like Ubiraj said, we will stand, we will walk the walk, regardless of what is going to come after. And so, that is what replaced our breakfast for our students and our pupils and our learners. But we got 94.4 billion dollars now. You know, one would have thought that in the day that the Education Minister or team, they would sit there and they would pull the experts in who can talk about nutritious meals that we would want to give to our children. But that isn't happening. You know what we got happening? The same gang. Friends, families, and favorites. They get in the contracts and so they are going to be providing the meals. And, and in some instances, they can pull, you know? And let me say this because it's factual. In Guyana, we have the return of apartheid, where the majority of people in our country are discriminated against as long as you're black, as long as you're Afro-Guyanese. And for the other brothers and sisters Indo-Guyanese and those who are Amritans and Portuguese, as long as you are perceived to be Afro, you're discriminated against. And you feel the wrath of their hands. Now, this is the same one Guyana I'm talking about, right? This is the same one Guyana that Efrain Ali preached this. And so, in the education sector, we have these issues. Just about two weeks ago, might have been just about two weeks ago, our students from Woody Park Secondary School on the west coast of Burbeys, black students, Afro-Guyanese students, were attacked by Indo-Guyanese parents and young men in... in the school compound and on the roadway. No arrest warrant yet, you know? No arrest warrant yet.
No arrests.
And in fact, I, right away, when I got that information, because I was here, I gave guidance to those who sought guidance from me. And the relevant procedure was followed. Report to the police, report to the Education Department, report to the RDC, report to the Welfare Department. After a couple of days, when everybody started blowing this up on Facebook, there was a meeting of the school and, and the, the students were now asked to come and, and you gotta come with us still to give... You wanna give us the names and you gotta come with us to identify these people. I mean, come on! But you know, up to now, no arrests has been made. And you're hearing Minister of Education coming out to make any bold statement condemning those acts, you know? And I want to remind us that not so long ago, pupils and students were attacked in the David G bus. You remember that, when they broke through the street?
Yes.
But we don't hear when those things happen, we don't hear those people are deemed hooligans and thugs and scum raiders. But when it happened in a certain area, in another area, they're being deemed hooligans and terrorists and, and thugs and so on. But all again, in the same boat, one Guyana. So, we are waiting to hear what the report is going to be coming from that issue and who will be arrested and what charge will be laid against them. Now, you see, the thing is, when we get to the level of getting our children involved in foolishness, then it speaks volumes. And I want to say this to us, if the parents from Lovely Life and Union and those villages had come out to say the schools in our areas, because the children there were told, "Ally, a black man, and this is a cool area, black man must stay." If the parents in those villages I named just now, if they were to turn that around and say, "Look, this is a black man village, cool people mustn't be here", then you, you notice, we, we're inching daily to having a civil war.
Yes.
And that's what the PPP wants, you know? They want that to happen because they want to bring what they have out to have maybe a massacre. But it is not, it's not started, if you like and done as you like, you know? These actions got repercussions. And people's energies are boiling in Guyana. And, and don't be surprised if one morning you wake up and you hear, "I wouldn't say for them." But teachers are stressed out, let me tell you that. And they're, they're gonna be leaving in drones again. Because they have to go where the pasture is presumed to be greener. They have to go there. And they will go. Many days, we have children going to school hungry. And I would have thought that with a 94.4 billion dollars allocation, that we would not only seek to give hot meal to Grade 6 pupils, but we would seek to expand that and include our nursery schools. As a matter of fact, give hot meals to every school. Those who want, you take. If you don't want, you don't take. We, we have moved now, we have oil. And every day, hundreds and thousands of barrels of oil. What we doing with the monies? We ain't got enough people in Guyana to spend those monies. And that is why I, I... One of my colleague had said, uh, the Honorable Carl Greenwich, that each family could get a million dollars a month from our, my revenues. But the PPP, they're not catering for that. That's not, that's not in their interest. Their business about, is about the rich continuing to get richer and the poor continuing to be poorer and for the gap to widen. You see, the PPP, they believe in not teaching you to fish, but giving you a fish every day. So that they can oppre... Continue to oppress you. That you'll always be there begging and bowing at their feet. That's what they like. But I'm happy that we have some Guyanese who are saying that nonsense is not for me. I go exactly. If I have to eat salted rice, I will eat salted rice. Never found the bigger, we happy with the... I am bowing knowing. Labor. Labor is at its worst in decades. As a matter of fact, we have a labor minister who doesn't even understand what the word labor means. So he can't labor for anybody. And you know, I know my grandmother used to say to us, and my great-grandmother, ungratefulness is worse than rich wealth. You see, that man, Joe Hamilton, he should be thankful to the PNC for all the days of his life. He should be worshiping the image of elephants, Burnham. But a time will come, a time will come when he gonna run and come again. But you know what we will do? We will open our arms and we will take him in. We will remind him. But we can open our arms and take him because they can shine all just now, you know? They can throw him all just now. Because if you can be ungrateful to the people who brought you up, who else you gonna be ungrateful to? And maybe that is why he can't say much when they sit in cabinet or when they sit other places. Because from 2020 to now, workers can't receive a livable wage. When the coalition government were in office, the minimum wage, wage was moved from, and Akeem, you could tell us, from thirty-something thousand dollars to seventy thousand dollars. That was what it was, that was what was done. Old age pension was moved from, what, $79,000 to $20,000. And that's what you talk about caring. That's people who love people. And so, when the former president instituted those buses for the schoolchildren to get to school, he, he was caring and he was concerned about their education so that we wouldn't have our schoolchildren on the road liming there waiting for mini buses and all packed up in mini buses. You had school buses to pick you up at a certain time, drop you off to school, pick you up at a certain time in the afternoon and ensure you get home early.
Free of course.
Free of course! Parents, in other areas where buses could not go or traverse, we had boats. Children had bus, uh, bicycles. Children were given bicycles. And, and so, when we look at what has happened during the, the, I would want to say, three and a half years of the coalition's reign in government, and when you compare that to 23, plus the two that they have now, there is no way that you can, that you can compare what was done by the coalition as against what was done by the... The coalition's the path what transpired during those years. But back to labor. I remember when the coalition was in office, Barak Javio was one of the persons who was there and he was lamenting on the fact and he was coming there to, to preach to the coalition that they must reintroduce collective bargaining. And I remember when I stood up against the coalition government when they did not want to talk to us and the teachers had to go out on industrial action, just like Paul, I was the queen of the pack for the PPP. But you see, one thing about the PPP, they don't understand. Coretta McDonald is a principled person. And so, I don't bow. I don't ask favors. And so, when Barak Javio called me in October of 2019 to tell me about, "Oh, his, his central exec, they met and there was high commendations from me and all kind of foolishness" because he wanted to tell me in the long run that he wants me to be on this list for national elections, I could have said to him at that point, "I am not interested." You see, I'm a ki... The kind of person who like to talk, because of my profession, of course. But I don't talk stupidness. And I stand my ground. And I cannot join the PPP and will never ever join the PPP. Because... Because the PPP have no respect for women. They have no respect, absolutely no respect for women. You see how they got Priya and all of them who can't talk, who can't talk? They can't talk, they can't shop and say anything. When Darimla talk about the dildo and Kwame, um, pushed, um, Sarabu and put Ali and so on, none of the women there could say anything. They dare not open their mouths to say anything. So the PPP have no respect for women. So I can't be part of their grouping. Secondly, the PPP, they have no respect for people who look like me. So I can't join it. And, and that's, I'm a straight as that. If you can't respect me, how would I be able to represent the people who look like me? I mean, while I'm there to represent all the people, I must look out a little bit for my brother down the road, my sister who look like me down the road. Because even in our homes, we got favorite, eh? We have everything in our homes. So, if I have my interest focused on all by stone, how I gonna help them and give them a little more when I can't talk in the grouping that I'm sitting here? So I can't be in that path. And what you see here is what you get. And I tell people every day, "I will be the Esther for my people." I have, I have my sis... One of my sisters here. And my relatives, they're all here. But I am GT, 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 GT to the fold. I stand right there. Because I gotta continue to talk to Javio. I gotta continue to shout the prayer, Manikshan. I will continue to talk about Efrain Ali and I will continue to talk about all that they are doing in Guyana. You know? We have a government that don't respect and don't understand that there's an almighty being up there. They don't care. And let me tell you what. You see in the Parliament where we sit? Where we're supposed to be there to represent the people of this country? The Speaker of the House, I don't know if you remember him, that was the man who stood at Pegasus. He was in the gang there at Pegasus where they attempted to overturn Dr. Karen Cummins's vehicle. He's now the Speaker of the House. Efrain Ali was there and many more of them were there. But you know what? They were not charged or they were not arrested. When Ajel and the whole crew walked into that room there, when President David Granger was about to speak and they started making noise, nobody attempted to arrest them for breaching the security of the president. But as soon as you talk now, they're ready to pull you in. You know? My brothers, Sherrod Duncan and Christopher Jones and all of them, they've been having their days in court. Some of my sisters and my brothers, they were suspended from Parliament because we stood up for our rights. But they forgot when Jagan threw flour in the Parliament and knocked down the mason, knocked down the law books and so on. They forgot those days. But now, because we are doing those things and standing up for our rights, they want to call us thugs and sanctimonious gangsters and so on. But let me tell you about Parliament. Just recently, during the Parliament, the budget debate, we were given a list of about, I think, forty-five words. Watch you so much because I said it to you. Uh, you can't use words like corruption, deception, oppression, destruction, vindictive, discrimination, racism, murderous, all kind of words. You can't use these words in Parliament. And, and that is based on the speaker's discretion. You cannot use those words in Parliament. You see, you see where we going? You see where we going? You see where we going? And this is the democracy that they preached about. You see where we going? And this is the democracy that they preached about. And, and I wonder, maybe you can help me to find out, where are the guardians of democracy? Y'all, you see them anywhere? Where are the guardians of democracy? Democracy? We don't find them now talking. You know, and, and I hear you say, what are we doing about it? The Speaker of the House rules the house. And if you, when you talk, the first thing he would do is to shut your mic off. Well, the mic story, let me tell you about that too while I'm on this. Every time there's a budget debate, the opposition members, they're not being heard by the nation, you know? They don't broadcast us. We have to carry our own people in there to carry us life. Even when we are walking through the doors, they have the, the photographers and so on and, and they are being, they're, they're, they're being instructed not to take the pictures of the opposition members when they're coming in. So that's the country that we live in, where democracy is dead. Accountability is D-E-A-B, dead. Transparency and accountability, dead. We don't have that in our country anymore. And that's the people, those were the people who talked about the coalition government. But you know what? What we're seeing now is a return of the twenty-three years. And they come back with a little more vengeance now. But the time will come. The time will come. Republic celebration, just recently we celebrated our republic anniversary, fifty-three years. And where are we? One, between ten and twelve o'clock of the, um, the twenty, the twentieth, the twenty-first, whatever day it was, not the federal, not Republic Day, the twenty-second, I think it was, when we had our flag raising activities. Between ten o'clock and twelve o'clock of that same day was when opposition members received their invitations for the event at seven o'clock, seven PM the evening. So that is saying to me that we, everyone, y'all there. But we sending the invitation so y'all can't say we didn't send you an invitation. Now, at those forums throughout the country, opposition members were not allowed to participate. So why we going there? What we going for? And in the regions that we control or the regions that we would have won, they wanted to dictate the pace, how the program must be structured. Hence the confusion that we had there when the, the Arjo assaulted the original chairman. Because as regional chairman, he uses authority to invite one of the coalition MPs to speak there to offer greetings. So we weren't allowed to speak. We weren't allowed to be a part of the program. More than that, the, uh, one hundred, the centenary committee who would have planned an entire year of activities in remembrance of Lyndon Forbes Sampson Burnham. They had as one of the activity, an exhibition, display pictures of LFS Burnham wherever you went. They had written speeches, they had voice, voiceovers. And they wrote the Ministry of Education, asking for the schools and, and that was held at Kitty, by Kitty Public Road there where you have Burnham's bus, where the women, they have their headquarters there. It was held there. So we have schools like St. Joseph High, North Georgetown Secondary, North Georgetown Primary, all the schools in the avenue there. QC and you got Bishop. So they were written to asking, requesting that students be allowed to come out to view the exhibition. Well, I tell you, they try hard to kill Burnham again, eh? But they can't do it. So permission was not granted. And this is history we talking about, you know, our history. Our history. So permission was not granted for the schools to, to attend that. What they said is that we were having mushroomani, uh, children's mushroomani competition, costume competition in the drama, poetry and drama and dance and steel fans. So, um, the children were not, couldn't come out at that time. But I am a teacher, let me tell you. At no time when we have those competitions going, the entire school is empty. No time. Students and pupils and learners are selected to go and represent their school to give the kind of support. So no time, the whole school is empty. But of course, they had to put up a sham to say because of this. But at other times, schools were allowed during that same time to go and visit a businessman's home to, to look at the Lamborghini and wherever, and where, and where. You know? That's the Guyana that we live in. One, one Guyana, one Guyana. But we, we got no one Guyana. We still have one people, one nation with one destiny. And so the one Guyana for the elites, we can throw that out. And friends and brothers and sisters, let me say to you, it's not an easy, it's not an easy road. But we have to walk this road, whether it's paved or it's not paved, we have to walk this road. Because you see what we are doing here is not for ourselves. We are creating the path for our children and our grandchildren and our great-grandchildren because we want them go through the same foolishness that we going through. So we got to stand up. We got to hug each other. We got to lift each other and encourage each other to stand up against this dictatorship government that we are having in Guyana. And, and we should not be fearful about this. You know, back home, they call me the people. And I know why they call me so. But I, I wear that title with pride, you know? I'm wearing it with pride. Because let me tell you, I see my pastor behind me. I know he are remembering me. But I from GT pastor that eh? And I go like that. But let me say to you, I fear no man. I fear God. And I will live every day and champion the cause of my people. And I tell them, when I go out on the road, I would tell my sons, when I go out there, if y'all don't see me come home at a certain time, know that they love me. And I would tell the police when I go out there very often, I ain't going to East in the Penitence. I don't want to go there with the women. I want to go where the men are. I'm going where the men are because I got to give them the kind of energies that they need. Because you notice, we women are always on the front line and our men, they're not that strong. So I going to give them the support that they need. So I am scared no lack of, I am afraid no lack of. So when I go out there, when they put me there, whether they can put me in breakdown or Grover, wherever they can put me, I go in there and we gonna have morning devotion. We gonna sing. We, you know, when you, you were home in your homes, you used to have morning devotion and you had to repeat a scripture and so on. I had an uncle, regardless of when we singing or whatever we doing, while you touching, he always sleeping because he would party on Saturday night. So Sunday mornings, he can't wake up. So every time you touch him, so I said, Jesus, where? So even if some of them have to remember that to say, Jesus, where? We gonna repeat the verses. Because let me tell you folks, we've got to go back to basics. We got to go back to basics. And to go back to basics, it means that we've got to start rigging the troops. One, we have to start educating the troops. Two. And three, we got to go out there and stand up in our numbers, unite a quantity. We ain't got time for this crazy pulling down this one and putting down that one and talking bad about this one and talking bad about the one. We got to talk bad about the PPP. Tell me who we got to talk bad about. And I want to say to you, Guyana will go nowhere if the PPP continues to remain there. You hear me?
Yes.
You hearing me? Guyana will go nowhere if the PPP continues to remain there. I don't know if I got enough time to talk about infrastructure. But infrastructure is where the corrupt, the corruption party is at. That's where the illegal party is at. And I gotta be careful because I know this, they, 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 they speak of the house here tonight and say, well, Honorable McDonald, you can't use this word corruption. But that's where the corruption is at. That's where we have all the fly-by-night companies popping up. And, and maybe Paul did not remember, but we got all kinds of security forms popping up every two mornings. And they got no training, hence the men shooting them, theirself in their foot and all kind of thing with the weapons. But the PPP know, they know exactly why they're allowing all these fly-by-night security companies to pop up. But we got good news for them. We got good news for them. Because let me tell you what. Our people will take what is rightfully ours. We must be a part of all the shares and all the resources that Guyana got. I don't know if you remember when they were having, when Lincoln Lewis and, and his family, they were having confusion at West Coast Burgies there at Kingdally. And Anil Nandellal told his supporters to go and occupy the land, take it, go fence it around. But the people at Kingdally, they stood strong. And so when they put up the post, they lash it down. When they tried to put up a fence, they tear it down. We got to stand up like that. We've got to stand like Daniel and we got to stand like Moses and we got to stand like Shadrach and Meshach and Abednego and all of them, we got to stand up like. We want too much of talking. Days for talk done, finish. We want no more of that. My brothers, let me say to you, the amount of embarrassment we would have faced since the PPP would have been returned to office, since they have been installed in office, the largest cocaine bust come from Guyana. And imagine, the people in Guyana, they're in, they can't, they said the cameras ain't working, the this ain't happening, the that's ain't happening. But where the cocaine touched up, the people there got the whole detail. Who's the consignee, who this, who that, spread, how it packing in, in, in the container. The people got all the information. But we here in Barajat, we have made a whole lot of excuses that we got it and the people erased this and that kind of thing. Now, if, if your customs offices and enforcement offices erased, what you supposed to do? Fire them and put them before the courts. But you can't do that if you in the same maril with them. So you can't do that. And then we had just recently our, our, our famous guy who continues to make himself famous, you know? On Facebook, we would say, let's make them famous, our famous boy Sharon Das. When he didn't do enough for the parliament, he gone till to India to do. And then my folk said to me, um, the Minister of Foreign Affairs said, oh, he wasn't aware. Where he should have been. If, if there was, if Burnham was president, he'd go home. You're not aware? And that thing happened one year ago and he wasn't aware. And the president too said, oh, he was somewhere and he saw this video somebody sent into him lying. Yes. Now, I've been told that I have to wrap up. I'm not gonna wrap up. I'm going to wrap up Mr. Chairman. But Mr. Chairman, before I wrap up, I must say this. The Henry's family are crying in West Coast Burgies. The Boston's family are crying in Essequibo. The Headley's families, they are crying on the east bank. The Baxton's family, they are crying on the east coast. Narash Singh's family, they are crying. What we gonna do about it? What we doing about it? And by the time we have finished there, we got the families in Mokka. I'm sure you saw what transpired there. But again, you know why these things are happening? Because we are not a united bunch of people. And people, let me say to us, everybody crying out for justice. Everybody wants peace, but nobody want to walk that road. We got to walk the road. We got to walk that road. We talk about a government or a government who hares themselves as being accountable, transparent and all kinds of things. But that same very government would have stopped the subventions that went to the Chrislow Labor College where young people are given a second chance and making themselves somebody. I thought G, they cut the subvention. As a matter of fact, just last Sunday, they withheld the permission that was granted to them to use one, one government building. They pulled the permission from them because they were going to have their meeting. The Linden Nurse and School, the music band in Linden, and these are the people who talk about, we want to see this and we want to see that. And when Letitia Wright went to Guyana, the biggest ship and they got shit all over the place, preventing her even to meet with the opposition. She couldn't even meet with Ipanoag. When she was supposed to meet the mayor at one time, she came home many hours after and you had people waiting there. But, but, but these are the people who will come and they will stand with black brothers and sisters and hold with them for photo op and share it all over and tell people, you see, we living nice. But we are living nice because you don't like me. You don't like me and you don't like the people who look like me. So we are living nice. We got villages, Annandale, Buxton, Straspi, Liverpool, Lancaster, Manchester, Wim, Bloemfield, Letterkenny. And if you see the roads that they're doing, Letterkenny and Bloemfield and Tane and so on, talk about what they're doing in Liverpool and Lancaster, Manchester, Alveston and, and Alniss and so on. Absolutely nothing. You know, we have one particular case where we have, I'm not sure how many of you would know him. There's a young man, Junior Crawford. Junior lives in Alniss. His father was the late, um, SC, very, very intelligent authority, Marcel Crawford. And so that Junior lives there. Junior is living in the middle of two streets. Because he's living in the middle, he got to use these two streets. They do the two streets, but they do streets beyond that. And that is what we, that's the people who talking about one Guyana. But my friends, let me say to you, the oil money will never get down to the small man. Another embarrassment, the global extractive industry transparency init- initiative, they've just suspended Guyana. Just suspended Guyana. And then the president came on television. You know, they like to come on television. So he came on television, make up his face like a boy and he's so upset that this thing didn't happen. But you know very well that it didn't happen. He know very well that it didn't happen. Since twenty twenty, report is submit. So you could understand twenty twenty-one, reported submit, ninety twenty-two report. And these are the people who talk about they can run government. They are corrupt. They are incompetent. They are vindictive and destructive and decisive and dismissive and demonized. That's the kind of people we got running Guyana. And I would say to you, let me say to you, the PPP, and I'm going to close on this, the PPP must go if Guyana has to grow.
Yes.
The PPP must go if Guyana has to grow. But let me say a closing, while we are looking at all of the areas of the PPP, in the coalition, we have posited recommendations. But you know, they don't carry those recommendations. And I think I heard Ubraj spoke, talk about it earlier. Where the, the leader of the opposition coming out of the, the coalition, he said, all students loans must be canceled. That's one. Two, there must be a fifty thousand dollars stipend given to, to the students at the university, at the technical institutes and at other institutions, they must be given a fifty thousand dollars stipend. Our people who are in need of homes and don't mix up house, lots of homes, they're two different things. But the PPP mixing both of them together. They must be able to get access to funding to build their homes. Let me remind you, Burnham gave time off to workers to build their homes for all of those schemes that we got, their self-help. And so you can't talk about putting me in no zinc, whatever they're putting up there. And I would have had the experience of going on the east bank to look at some of those houses that are being built. And let me tell you what, the contractors are doing what they have to do because they want get their monies. But some of those, in some of those homes that are being constructed, inferior work is being done. The, the mixing that they're doing, if they're supposed to have four sacks of cement, they put cement, they put two or two and a half. So you can understand why when some people move into those homes, they got a whole lot of dusting, they, 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 they post cracking up, they this happening. Mr. Chairman, you will have to send me another note. All kinds of things happening. But I must say to you that in order for Guyana to grow, the PPP must, must.
Repeat that to me. In order for Guyana to grow, the PPP.
Repeat that to me, in order for Guyana to grow, the PPP must grow. Give her another round of applause. And we're now getting started. We're now getting fired up. And I'm not gonna go through, I'm not gonna go through the exercise of asking you to remember the words that the honorable member used. And, um, please don't refer to me as Mr. Speaker, I am not Masu the Bigot. Uh, Madam, Madam Honorable Member, I always sound like the speaker, right? I don't know if it is prudent for me to mention these numbers. I'm not gonna call the names, but listen to this. These are ten contracts, and I don't think this is made public knowledge yet. I don't know if it's in the press. But we got it. Ten contracts were given out to ten contractors to do a ten-mile stretch of road. I'm not gonna call the place, somewhere on the, the West Coast, is it West Coast or County?
Region six.
Region six.
Right.
Oh, this thing is out already? Comrades, these numbers will send shockwaves through you. I'm not gonna say the names. But contractor number one got 835,705,049 dollars. That's contractor number one. Contract, and all of these contractors, none of them are Afro-Gayanese. Contractor number two got 609,394,223 dollars. Contractor number three, who carries the similar name to the Vice President of the country, 789,674,67 dollars. Contractor number four, 680,803,830 dollars. Contractor number five, 990,276,840. Contractor number six, 737,943,255. Contractor number seven, 285,942,000. Contractor number eight, 517 million. Contractor number nine, 687,280,000. And contractor number 10, 594 million dollars. Comrades, they're doing ten miles of road on West Coast burpees. Region six, I'm sorry, region six. East Coast burpees. Now listen, just listen to the numbers. That each one of these contractors are getting to do a ten-mile stretch of road. And this came from the Department of Finance. Think of what Comrade McDonald just said and what everybody had said. If this is not corruption, nothing is. And there are Guyanese people in Georgetown and around the country who is paying $4,000 for two voluntary. You do the math. Do the math and tell me where our country is going. If Guyana is to grow,
The PPP must grow.
This, this, um, event is being recorded live. I want to repeat this phrase again and I want to hear you loud and clear. Richard, you got your microphones on? If Guyana is to grow, say it one more time, if Guyana is to grow, this gentleman, a man who is fighting the fight daily in the trenches, arrested, uh, threatened to be arrested every day, lived in a basement that is now a mansion. My friend, my colleague, Mr. Richard Burke.
Thank you, thank you, good night, everybody. Good night, everybody. I've heard that greetings were giving away, so I'm, I want to give away some greetings as well. I bring you greetings from the Democratic Party. In Congress. My friend Congressman Hakim Jeffries. And so thank you, guys, thank you, members of Member Parliament, um, PNC Chairman here in New Jersey, Mr. Washington, Mayor Ubiraj Narain, my brother, and Mr. Paul Slow, the distinguished former police officer. Good night, everybody. I'm happy to be here. Um, I'm not gonna take too long. Um, but I feel assured when I listen to the presentations here tonight. Um, when I listen to Corinna talk about how they're holding the guard, rights of democracy and justice, um, and fighting for racial justice, I feel fired up. Are you fired up? Are you fired up? The mayor standing up for the people of Georgetown. I am nervous, but I'm fired up. Before I say what I want to say, um, I know that the telephones are probably ringing in Georgetown that I'm speaking now. I want to respond to the Guyana Police Force. They issued a statement this evening condemning me because I criticized the police commissioner for going, being a political activist, a political flunky for the PPP and a house slave. So he issued a statement saying that I am a fugitive from justice and I'm a criminal. Wash, wash, he said, so let you guys know, we have 18,000 people watching us. Over 18,000. Well, I'm not sure if the police commissioner noticed that Attorney General of New York warned them that if they touch any one of us in the Guyanese community who's speaking out, that the United States government will hold them accountable. I don't know that the United States government will stand up for criminals. But as a black man who's a house slave, is I sparse black people like me? I never shot and killed black people in Buxton. I never shot protesters fighting for their rights in Linden. No one ever caught me with wet money from a bank robbery where all the money was not turned over. I didn't kill the people, the miners in Christmas fall. I couldn't write, I'm not the one that couldn't write an essay when the president called me for an interview to be police commissioner. I don't take bribes. I see he said something about he is following a strategic plan. Dozens of police officers have said, there's no strategic plan. He is the most unqualified corrupt police commissioner in the history of the country. And he's attacking me and calling me a criminal. I was never arrested in my life. So I was really pissed off when I saw that statement. I shouldn't probably say, use that word, but I was angry and I live in a country where we exercise free speech. And let me say, uh, with regard to this wanted bulletin that they're putting out for people. They're abusing the police process. And let me say, I'm gonna announce this now. The Federal Bureau of Investigations, the United States FBI, is investigating the Guyana Police Force. They're investigating the circumstances which they're using uh, wanted bulletins to harass people in this country. I met with the FBI, Paul Slow met with the FBI. They're investigating the Guyana Police Force harassment of Paul Slow as well. So if the police commissioner knows what is good for him, he should shut up. Because someday, one of them might come to this country and don't go back, they might be arrested. So that's so much for the police wanted bulletin. I, I had to respond to the Guyana Police Force. They sparse black people. And I am ready to throw the gunnet at them. I don't live in Guyana, I live in America. I'm protected by this country. And so when you mess with us, we throw the gunnet at you. Now, I'm happy that we have this forum, we've never been to New Jersey to talk about the apartheid regime in Guyana, to talk about the suffering of the Guyanese people, to talk about the racism and the apartheid government of Guyana. And I'm gonna rush through what I have to say, but I want to assure the people of Guyana that we have been given the assurance by the White House, by the Congress and by the Congressional Black Caucus, that there will be a summit this year on Guyana and Guyana's future. And many of you would have seen the forum we had in Brooklyn and it was convened specifically to discuss transnational repression crimes. That's where governments like Russia and China and North Korea and Iran attack their citizens in the United States. There's a special law for that. And so as Washington said earlier, we had the Justice Department there, we had the Attorney General, we had the NYPD. We had the Attorney General's office, the United States Attorney General's office. We had our elected officials there. They're taking what is happening in Guyana very seriously. And all the abuses, I personally briefed members of Congress about what the government did to the mayor. For absolutely nothing, they arrested the mayor. If I was the mayor of Georgetown, some of them couldn't come back in that city. They couldn't come back in the city. And this government is operating as though Guyana is a plantation. And they are the white slave masters. They act like they're the new philanthropy. And black people are the slaves and East Indians who don't support them, like Ubiraj Narain and, and Daniel Siram and so many others. And Ganesh, my girl. And we have to stand up to them. And I dare say, we have to fight them. We have to fight them. This is our country. And I'm serious as a heart attack, we have to fight them. It seems as though this government has a plan to separate the country. They want to make Guyana a suan, where they marginalize a certain set of people until the country split apart. You notice they have a strategy, whatever we call it, they're racist, they call us racist? Well, let me tell you something, I would live and die a racist if I'm fighting for the rights of black people. This is black history, man, and we stand up for black people. And when they come to this country, they will learn that they're black too. So in this country, we fight for them as well. And that's why I want to encourage the people of Guyana to stand up. You see what Corinna talked about, what they did to Mokka? That's the closest thing we've come to slavery. They went and destroyed homes of black residents on black ancestral lands. I'm surprised there was not an uprising in the country. And I'm wondering what sort of people are doing? I'm not saying you must rise up violently, but rise up politically. Give them hell. That's what we do in this country. Look what happened when they killed George Floyd. I'm not saying you must get violent. But it pains me when I see what they're trying to do to black people in the country and then they want to talk about one Guyana as a slogan for cosmetics. So we have to have a plan. And you may have noticed a while back that eighty-five organizations and prominent individuals wrote a letter to the Vice President of the United States. Kamala Harris, that letter went to the leader of the Democrats now, Hakim Jeffries, who I know is the PPP's nightmare because if they had any sense, they would have realized that this guy is aiming high and moving high. And when he said the United States government will not tolerate racism in Guyana, they should say, yes, we support that. Which country tolerates racism? But they defended racism. When the Attorney General said we will not tolerate racism, they ran to the Republicans to tap her. Now, the FBI is investigating whether or not that was a contribution to the Republican campaign by the PPP. Because that's how it is in this country. When you go and you assist and you provide dirt on, that's a contribution to the campaign. So every time they open their mouth, they put themselves in trouble. As a matter of fact, what triggered the investigation of the attacks on Paul Slow and myself is the response to the Attorney General from Gail Tashara. That letter in itself was a crime. Because in that letter, Gail Tashara boldly called Prince Paul Slow a criminal. And then Barajat there came up the next day and said, I'm a criminal. Barajat's government murdered over 1,000 black people within purity, never any justice. Barajat was found with his basement, like I say, I live in a basement. I got two houses in America. But he was found in his basement or wherever negotiating a 500,000 US dollar bribe, caught by Chinese media workers. They don't give a brine to understand that these were not Chinese businessmen. And they went around the country.
So? Where is so? Who is so?
In addition to that, they're, as Corinna said, they're involved in all sorts of infrastructure corruption. Where they're transferring the wealth of the country to East Indians. And there's nothing wrong with East Indians getting rich. But if East Indians are bidding for contracts, it must be a fair process. And black contractors must get a contract too. In addition to this, let me say this. When Gail Tashara attacked Attorney General and said, oh, it's not true that there is racism, the Congressional, some members of the Congressional Black Caucus asked us for data. And CGID commissioned some researchers, some economists in Guyana to go on the procurement, uh, the tender boards website. We got information from them. Go, we, the economists went on the tender board website and did an analysis of all the contracts that were awarded, because I kept saying it's lying. And the analysis found that 72% of the contracts went to East Indians. Listen to this, 2% went to black people. 10% went to foreigners. And 80% of the foreigners were East Indians from Trinidad. So it was 82% of the contracts were going to East Indians. And then you want to tell me about one Guyana? They're transfer, this is serious. These racists, these apartheid thugs in the PPP, they're systematically transferring the wealth of the country to themselves, their family and their East Indian supporters. Not even East Indians, East Indian supporters because they're anti-Pour East Indians. The PPP doesn't give a damn about the poor East Indians. They are concerned with their friends and their families. That's what we're facing. And let me tell you something, Guyana has hundreds of billions of dollars in oil money to get. And they plan to get it all for themselves. They plan to shut off the black and American and East Indian community that doesn't support them. And that must not happen. We must mobilize the world to kick them out of power. Let me repeat that. We must mobilize the world to kick them out of power. We must mobilize the world to investigate their corruption. And I am dedicated to that. I am dedicated to that. I am dedicated to make sure that Barajat is held accountable for all those extrajudicial murders, even if it takes, cannot get us satisfied. I'm gonna be fighting for that. You will not kill black people and get to rid of it. And then come and puff up yourself at election time, hang around some white people, get yourself back in power and hold your head high like you have integrity. and hold your head high like you have integrity when you're a murderer. And we are planning to hold the Biden administration accountable for the fact that they have allowed this American ambassador to remain in Guyana. I want all of you here to write your Senator Cory Bocca and Bob Menendez, who's the Chairman of the Finance Committee, and demand to have my Senator Chuck Schumer have a hearing to confirm the new ambassador nominee for Guyana. So that we can have Sarah Lynch pack her bags and, no! I have nothing against the Lynch, she might be a very nice woman. But she came to the country. She is in bed with people who have killed black people. She went to Texas and said, democracy was challenging, we won. As though she's a part of the PPP agenda. I have nothing against the woman. She went to the home of someone who is under FBI investigation for funding international terrorism. The ambassador for the country. And when asked by a journalist, she said it was a bathroom break. Maybe, maybe. But what I'm saying is, if you are, indeed, she said during the recon, all she wants is the rule of law to be followed. Have you heard anything from this ambassador about the racism? Have you heard anything about justice for Orange Boston and Kevin Andrews and Creighton Backers and the Henry Boys? She's a Trump ambassador. Trump ambassador. I don't know, some of them in Guyana, they are probably nieces and nephews of Jim Crow. I'm not saying that ambassador is, I'm just saying. Running around in our country like if it's a plantation. Supporting racists that are oppressing and subjugating black people. It is time for us to get serious. And I want to address the black people of Guyana. Coretta says that we have to stand together. It's more than that. It's more than that. Why don't we have a black lawyers association? Protecting the interests of black lawyers and black people? A certain gentleman who was a a lawyer from a judge told me that he had a discussion with the Bar Association. And he asked them, why they don't have a black bar association? Said, oh, that's the reason this country is united. It is because the black citizens are under attack that we have to now put in place institutions and organizations and systems to protect our interests. We need a black land development organization. We need a black doctors association. We need a black bank. We have to act like we were in the civil rights struggle of America in Guyana. And when I say black, I include in that group everybody called we black, but the people who are opposed to the PPP. Because the PPP wants to develop that country and leave us out. Our foreparents, the slaves, built that country. We would not allow them to shut us out of the history and the destiny of the country. We can't. We can't. And if they truly believe in one Guyana, then they have to make sure that they develop the country for everybody. And everybody participates in the development of the country. And that's why we want the United States government to intervene. And I'm telling you, don't bother with the propaganda from the PPP. They like to go and take photographs of black members of Congress and so on. You notice the black chairman of the Black Congressional Black Caucus refused to meet with our finale? That's because of the work that we are doing here. Did you hear the Vice President tell them we need inclusive growth? That's because of the work we are doing here. Did you hear the Attorney General of New York say we will not tolerate racism in Guyana? That's because of the work we're doing here. Did you hear the future speaker of the House of Representatives say the United States will not tolerate racism? That's because of the work we're doing here. But we have just gotten started. We have a lot more work to do. These people have billions of dollars at their disposal. Right now, they're paying lobbyists to lobby the United States government to keep the ambassador there to do this, to do that. Recently, they applied for thirteen billion US dollar loan at US Exem Bank. We must block that loan. Call your senators. Call Cory Bocca. Call Congressman Pitt. We must block that loan because that money would be transferred to their supporters, their family and their friends too. They probably buy their televisions and and phones and computers taking notes. They're gonna issue a statement tomorrow. That's fine, we gonna respond. This is serious business. Let's, as I close, deal with the contracts. These people are giving away the country. All of the money of this country. You check, I don't know if Coretta could tell us, what is the capital budget? Capital expenditure part of the budget? Hundreds of billions of dollars. Of that percent, of that, one percent going to black people. Or Americans or Indians who don't support the PPP, one percent? One. We have to find a solution. So I want to see all of those black contractors in Guyana pool their resources, form conglomerates, and bid for contracts. I would like to see the unions in Guyana mobilize their workers to stand up and fight for justice so that when they file one, they must feel the heat from all. Could you believe that adults, East Indian PPP supporters, adults, are beating up little black children on the curtiling, sorry, beat to five? And using hate speech, like this is an Indian area and black man can't comment? That's what the opposition leader said. I have the videos. And the Minister of Education today issued a statement saying it was not racially motivated. I want to see the people of the east, of west coast babies all stand up and fight for justice for those children. Even if they're East Indian or Amerikan children, if they're attacked, we must have justice. If it's black people attacking Indian children, there must be justice also. That's what we're about as a nation. Justice, fairness, equal protection under the law. And then let's come to the police force, and I'll close. The government is using the police force to impose ethnic supremacy in the country. That's what they're doing. Did you see what happened to Golden Grove? Just last week? The people protested for the murder of Creighton Backers. And if those people did not protest and were not persistent, they would not have charged that guy with murder. But they come back with revenge months later. And they rounded up some young black boys and say, y'all are terrorists. But the real terrorists were the PPP supporters at Monroeb. Where we saw them on video throwing gas on cars, wheeling cartridges and guns, saying people have a dead head today. Those young black boys didn't do that. And let me announce that one of them is my nephew.
It was two of those guys here in P and they targeted for that.
One of the people that they targeted, they didn't even know was a police officer. They told you that the people did nothing, they came out on the road and they were just standing there. But if you mess with my family, there's fair game somewhere. Read between the lines. Fair game somewhere. They arrested my nephew because of the work. They went to court. And the magistrate asked the prosecutor, the police prosecutor, where's the evidence? She went to court and she said, help all these guys, they're terrorists and a threat to society. Magistrate said, you all just go home with some bill. No evidence. But it's dangerous. They're trying to turn Guyana into Russia. They're trying to turn Guyana a police state. They're trying to use the Guyana Police Force to intimidate the black population. And I want to say to police officers, they're very good decent police officers, do not go down the path where Clifton Hicken is using the Guyana Police Force. Remember there was a time when police officers couldn't even wear their uniform? Because they're being targeted because of their injustice? Clifton Hicken is going to lead the Guyana Police Force down that road again. And so senior police officers must stand up to him. Senior police officers must learn to tell them when they're breaking the law. You guys saw the Crime Chief lying? He was caught on victim line in the Bascom Matter, where a police officer came forward and said, I have knowledge that these guys are taking bribes to cover up a murder. And they went after him viciously. Well, let me tell you this. I believe him. Because a police officer flew, a sitting police officer flew to New York and met with us and gave us evidence about serious criminal activity by members of the Guyana Police Force, this current leadership of the Guyana Police Force. And if they push me too far, you're gonna see it. In addition to that, police officers in Guyana submitted sworn statements to the FBI. And that's all I say about that, about corruption in the Guyana Police Force. So there's no denying that there's corruption. And the Guyana Police Force is not following the law. They're taking the political directions from the government. They're a part of the PPP. And police officers must not obey those instructions. If those instructions are illegal, don't obey them. If everybody stands up, they'll have to follow the rule of law. So as I close, I want my message to you in New Jersey tonight is get on the phone, get on your computers, write to your members of Congress. You see how the Ukarian Americans are mobilizing? The American political rhetoric? That's what we need to do. You see how the Jews are mobilizing the American political rhetoric? And everything Israel wants, they get? That's what we need to do as Guyanese. We can't sit here and ring hands and bash Coretta Abdullah and bash Daniel Siram and bash the mayor and bash this person. Yes, we can give constructive criticism. But we here have to stop being silent and get off of our laurels. Fight for our country here in America. And we have bargaining power. We came out by the millions as Caribbean Americans and voted for Joe Biden and Kamala Harris. We must pressure our representatives to make sure that there's justice in Guyana. To make sure that we get rid of the apartheid government in Guyana. To make sure that Guyana doesn't have a government that is the most brutally racist and violently oppressive in the Western Hemisphere. Because that's what the PPP government is. And we want Exxon to know as well that we know that they're financing projects for the PPP. We know that. It might not be directly to the PPP, but there are projects that are benefiting the PPP politically. And we are asking the United States government to look at that too. So as I close, thank you guys for coming. We appreciate us. Let's stand together in the diaspora. Let us stand together and fight this government back home. The people in Guyana don't give up, don't be intimidated. Stand up and fight for your rights, fight for justice, fight for democracy. Thank you. Folks, as usual, you have to get a break for another round. The one phrase that I took away from Rick Mark's speech, not that I didn't take away a whole lot, but I want, the one thing I would advise you to remember when he referred to ethnic supremacy. Ethnic supremacy, that's what we're faced with. So if there are any questions, just step to the microphone quickly if there are any. Say who your question is for and you'll get your answer. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I got a question.
Step to the microphone. Sure.
Mayor. Aren't, isn't the mayor of Georgia responsible for all the roads and the different things that they're doing in Guyana? Well, I understand that there's some roads that were redeveloped in certain parts of the scheme, but the roads are higher than the people yards. The way they made them now is the roads were lower, but now they're higher, so people yards are flooding. Is that something deliberate? That, I mean, you do you want people to have all these plots so that they could destroy their properties? Or, I mean, what is, what is going on here?
Well, if you had listened to my statement earlier, where the lead mentioned that the government don't engage the council. Our last year is totally different from New York's. And that is where we get mixed up at nights. New York may is executive mayor. In back home, city of Georgia, totally executive mayor. So these roads, yes, there's certain road belongs to the city, and certain roads belongs to government. But at this point of time, if the government is starving the city of some venture and the government officials is going about in the city breaking the laws, going to the same room and doing the rule without consultation with the city officials, what do you expect it? You expect, it's like you made mention. It's like no consultation, you didn't reach with the people, they don't exactly what they want. And like my friend said, that is all about giving contracts. Right? You know, it really needs to kind of make walk. It just now you have a good one, but you dug it up and give a contractor a remove from the asphalt. See then to talk to crew, make walk, waste that payment. Right? And you know, I know I get a few drab acts too. That, I mean, that is what Guyanese want and the government to do.
Drama, drama government.
So the council has no say at this point of time in any development in the city. I want to make that very clear. They bypassed all laws of the city. And that is what you call the dictatorship. Now, yes, I go to court and my old counselors said, vote to withdraw the case. So we have our own issue on that. And I have no apology by saying it publicly, because I think the vacuum of humility. We delivered to court on the matter. And I old counselors said, withdraw the matter. All doing to me.
I hope, I hope those counselors are not gonna be running again.
These are issues we face. We can't be divided and want to fight toward the democracy. And I'm a police force, I have no apology to be.
Thank you. Any other questions? Let me just remind you, you can step to the mic, but let me remind you why this grammar is coming to the mic. And Coretta, you can stand at that mic. And let's keep your questions short. I'm gonna ask our guests to keep your answers short. And so we can get out of your timely question. Um, I was reminded by our member of parliament here, if you need additional information on everything that was discussed here, there are several shows on television or online that you can look at, in the rain. Everyone knows that with Charo Duncan. Everyone knows that with Cheryl Duncan. There's another program called Advancing the Cause. There is Building Bridges, there is Nation Watch, there is Let's Start and what was the name of your show? Speaking Out and we heard your show. Conversation, these are all shows that literally remind you of the atrocities that's taking place in here. Your question.
Uh, Madam, uh, Member of Parliament, I, I just wanted to ask you about the state of unity of the party in Guyana.
The state of the past. I know after the twenty twenty elections, many, many of our supporters, their bubbles were worst. Let me put it that way. Um, they begun, they, they became demotivated, demoralized and everything else. Because they threw their hearts and everything else out and so they started staying away. On top of that, we had quite a lot of internal results, a lot of breakaway fractures, all kinds of craziness. As is right now. We are working very, very hard, extremely hard to pull the fractions together. Because we have recognized that we can't go forward if we are at pieces. No house that is divided can stop. And so I want to ask you here. To write letters, send them to us, send them to Central XZ, send them to those past leaders that we have. Reminding them that the party is bigger than all of us. And in order to move together, we have to be as one. We can't continue to have a Norton fraction, a McDonald fraction, I'm just using names here, you see. A Rick Ford Ford fraction, a Obrashner Ryan, we can't go forward like that because let me tell you what. Don't think the PPP don't got a confusion, but you know what? We don't hear about it, forgive a little piece, look at that, so what you hear. But every time we have issues in our party, we got to see it on the media, you got to hear about it here. We have to stop those kinds of nonsense and we have to move together, recognizing that the PPP are our enemies and not we here ourselves. But you know what we have done, we have decided that we here are our enemies. So we fighting against each other and given the PPP ammunition to fight with us. But I can assure you that with a Coretta McDonald and an Obrashner Ryan and a Paul Slope. And a couple of our other members, Natasha St. Louis and the name of Flobeth. Look, I want you to put your hands together for my honorable F, the name of Flobeth. We are fighting. We will continue to fight to ensure that the party remains a united party. We have several projects that we're on in order to bring some of our leaders back into the fold. I'm not going to divulge here, but look out for that, we've got to move, yes, we've got to move as one, yes.
Thank you.
My question is still. Is McDonald, you know, when the coalition was in government, you were able to mobilize the teachers to strike. Why is it you are unable to mobilize the teachers to strike while the people is involved?
Let me say to you, we have been personally in our neighborhood to mobilize. If you remember, we had a strike when the PPP came into office. We had a strike, but let me check what is happening with the PPP. They know how to instill fear into people. Quite a lot of our teachers, as kids in there, and you know that there's salutes of teachers can't support the teachers. Our mobilization in terms of finances is not where it is supposed to be. And so we have to put the systems in place because when we go out there, we don't want to have both slow and sitting. Because that's a negative fact. So for us to go out there, you know, the first thing the PPP will do is to cut the teachers salaries. Teachers, and we have to be real, teachers have mortgages to pay, they got car notes to pay, they have the day and everything else. So if we are going to go out there, we must have a way of being able to subsidize what is going to be taken away from the teachers. That's the reason why we did not prolong that strike. But like I said earlier, the fire is building. And so it's not going to be the teachers alone. The entire working force is there. I know it's difficult because we have some of our union leaders who are compromised and there's no if and buts about that.
Everybody compromised.
We who are strong with standing with our veterans. And the teachers are ready to go out. They are ready to go out, but we can't expose our teachers to coming out. And then we can't fill that space in the basket for them at his time. But things are happening.
Thank you. Any other questions before we get to the next item of the program? Okay. Okay, folks, comrades. I want to recognize a couple of folks in the audience. And we're cutting off our live feed right now, but we thank you eighteen thousand plus for listening to us this evening. On behalf of all of us here.